Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. John Malgett is with First Christian Church in Oklahoma City. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilwoman Salyer, she'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Let us pray. God of grace and of glory, we look for you through telescopes, and yet we do not find your face. But through these lenses, we see the mighty sculptures of your hand. We look for you through microscopes and yet do not hear your voice, but we see your fingerprints etched in the tiniest microcosm of life itself. Oh God, as we come before you, we give you thanks for the very gifts we enjoy and for the opportunity to serve the people here in Oklahoma City. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to always speak with charity and with restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are the stewards of your authority. We pray for peace in our world and in our community and for a deeper bonding within your human family. We pray for understanding among your people, an understanding that melts the barriers of religion and race, color, class, and creed. Loving God, guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or how poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. We pray for empathy, to walk in the sandals of those who have sipped from different cups. We pray for humility, which allows us to be less arrogant when we are right and less defensive when we are wrong. We pray for patience, to be more agreeable, even in those times when we disagree. And finally, oh God, renew us with the strength of your presence. Give us the joy of helping to build an ever better community worthy of every human person. We ask this as your children, confident in your goodness and your love. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. An extremely sad moment at City Hall recently with the passing of Municipal Judge Paige Morgan, and Paige's extended family has come down today, and we have a resolution. Would you all come forward and we'll ask the clerk to read the resolution as we get settled.
Whereas Judge Paige Price Morgan was born on May 13th, 1953, and passed away on February 27th, 2015, surrounded by family at her home in Oklahoma City. Whereas Judge Morgan graduated from Oklahoma State University with a bachelor's science degree in 1975 and earned a Juris Doctor degree from the Oklahoma City University School of Law in 1980. Whereas Judge Morgan had a lengthy law career, which she began as a judicial intern for the Oklahoma Supreme Court from 1978 to 1980. Whereas Judge Morgan served as an Assistant Municipal Counselor for the City of Oklahoma City from 1980 to 1986. Judge Morgan worked in private law practice for the Edmund Law Center from 1988 to 1990, and Judge Morgan was appointed and served as a special judge for the Oklahoma City Municipal Court from 1991 to 1995. Whereas Judge Morgan was sworn in as a full-time municipal judge for the City of Oklahoma City in 1995 and was appointed Vice Presiding Judge in 1999. Whereas Judge Morgan was beloved, respected, and appreciated by her fellow judges, city prosecutors, the criminal defense bar, the municipal court staff, police officers, and city enforcement officers. Whereas Judge Morgan enjoyed life, holiday seasons, had an excellent sense of humor, had a love of animals, often serving as a foster parent to troubled animals from the city animal shelter, and had a great appreciation of law and justice. Whereas Judge Morgan is survived by her loving husband Fred, daughter Megan Tilly, and husband Matt, son Daniel Morgan and wife Christina, sister Pamela Bynum, brother Dr. Richard Price, and nieces Anna and Rachel. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby extend their deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Judge Paige Price Morgan.
Need a motion from council and a second. Cast your votes, and the resolution passes unanimously. Let's show our appreciation in memory of Judge Morgan.
Well, thank you, and thank you, council members, very much. I know you, many of you knew her and many of you appreciated her, and I know many of you myself, and so thank you very much. Our family is very honored by this. This job meant a lot to her. While her life was cut short, I think she balanced life very well between family and job, and she balanced also her role as a judge very well by being firm and compassionate with a high sense of justice. It didn't matter who you were, you were always treated the same in her court. She did have a great sense of humor, and I want to thank all of her fellow judges, especially Judge James and Deputy Davis. Thank you very much for all of your help during this difficult time. She was committed. She was still taking chemotherapy during lunch hour and fulfilling her job because she didn't want to leave her fellow judges down. So, thank you, we're very honored.
Thank you. Thank you, Fred, thank you. Let's show our appreciation.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment if I could. As Chairman of the Judiciary Committee, Judge Morgan was a great jurist for Oklahoma City, great, a lot, great service. She, she was a fighter to the end, Fred, I know you know that, but I really personally appreciate her years of service to the court system in Oklahoma City. Thank you.
And as most people in Oklahoma City know, we are coming up on the 20th anniversary of the Oklahoma City bombing, and April, starting tomorrow, we thought it would be appropriate to bring in some people who have tasked themselves with keeping the memory of those victims alive, and we're going to talk a lot about the Oklahoma standard over the next month. I think it's a good chance for all of us in Oklahoma City to think back to where we were on April 19th, 1995, but also what we've learned since then, and why it's appropriate for us to continue to pass down these lessons to the next generation and keep these memories alive. And we have some people here from the memorial. Carrie, come on up. Susan, come on up. Zach. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas 20 years ago, Oklahomas impressed the nation with their selfless and connected response to the April 19th, 1995 bombing of the Alfred P. Murrah Federal Building. And whereas in the aftermath of the bombing, the people in Oklahoma City joined hands, pulled each other up, and dared the world to tear us apart. Whereas Oklahoma City embraced the many people from outside our state who assisted in search and rescue operations, relief efforts, and offered their thoughts and prayers to our community. Whereas the countless acts of kindness and sense of community displayed in the days after the bombing became known across the nation as the Oklahoma Standard. Whereas Thunder General Manager Sam Presti, a trustee of the Oklahoma National Memorial and Museum, and Chairman of the Oklahoma Standard Campaign, is asking businesses, organizations, clubs, families, and individuals to commit one act of service, one act of kindness, and one act of honor during the month of April. Whereas the Oklahoma Standard Campaign is an attempt to make sure that we are giving a nod to our values, a nod to the foundation in the present, but it is also an attempt to ensure that those values and the standard itself grows in scale with the vision and future of Oklahoma. Whereas the City of Oklahoma City proudly joins hundreds of Oklahoma businesses and organizations in embracing the Oklahoma standards called of service, kindness, and honor. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of April, 2015, as Oklahoma Standard Month in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to the staff and the board of directors at the memorial. Carrie, you all have done a wonderful job. We love the improvements that have been made over there, and I'd like for you to invite those people in Oklahoma City who have not seen the improvements to come down and see them this month.
If you haven't been, it's a new experience. We hope you'll come, and we're grateful to the council for their support and their help along the way. This is a story about the great resilience of Oklahoma City, and we're proud to tell that story.
Susan, I know you're representing the board, and this Sam Presti stepping up and ask all Oklahomans to remember the bombing this month.
Right. You've expressed so beautifully what we're trying to do, and as you said, Sam, who is not originally from Oklahoma, pointed out to us how special Oklahoma and particularly Oklahoma City truly is, and asked that as part of continuing that longstanding tradition of the Oklahoma Standard, that generosity that comes from each of our hearts, that we take this campaign to heart and spread the word across not only Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, but the nation as well. And your willingness to participate in this is so well appreciated by the members of the board and the members at the memorial. So, thank you very much.
One act of service, one act of kindness, one act of honor. Think about these things in the month of April, and please pass them along to other members of your family who might be listening to us today. It really is a special opportunity for us to think back about how far this city has come in the last 20 years and to make sure the people that gave their lives that day are not forgotten. So let's show our appreciation one more time for the people from the memorial. Thank you, Carrie. You bet, Susan. Thanks, Zach. Good luck. The ceremony this year, the April 19 ceremony, if you don't have your calendar in front of you, will fall on a Sunday, and of course, the general public is more than invited but encouraged to come down to the memorial that morning for the nine o'clock ceremony. And there'll also be other events around the community to commemorate this year. There's a lunch in the next week, and of course, one of the top marathons in the country runs in honor of the victims of the Oklahoma City Memorial, and that'll be the following Sunday on April the 26th. So, an entire month to think back about how far Oklahoma City's come and the true meaning of what that memorial means to Oklahoma City. All right, now let's move on to another event that is a staple of spring in Oklahoma, and that is Litter Blitz 2015. Come on up. Terry Trashasaurus is here, along with Mother Earth. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas litter is a critical factor in our city's economic health, and a clean city reduces taxpayers' costs to remove the litter and attract new businesses. Whereas Oklahoma City Beautiful and the City of Oklahoma City are teaming up again for the Litter Blitz 2015. Whereas Litter Blitz 2015 is an effort to clean up neighborhoods, parks, streets, and businesses to help beautify Oklahoma City. Whereas neighborhood civic, church, and business groups can register their team to pick up litter on a date they choose. Whereas each team will receive a packet with free trash bags, gloves, and tips for a safe and successful cleanup. Whereas last year, over 12,000 volunteers participated in the community cleanup and more than 171,000 pounds of trash was removed from our public spaces. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of April as Litter Blitz 2015 in Oklahoma City, and urges all citizens to help combat litter in their parks, schoolyards, neighborhoods, and throughout all areas of the city.
Let's show our appreciation to Oklahoma City Beautiful and all they do for us. And I was, I was just looking at some of these numbers. Last year, 12,000 volunteers participated in a community cleanup. In other words, they actively got out and prepared, planned, and probably gathered others to join them in a beautification effort to make Oklahoma City a beautiful city. And 171,000 pounds of trash were removed. Terry, that is, that is impressive. You've got to be impressed by that. And Lisa Seinar does such a good job of running this organization. I'm going to hand the mic to her, and so she can give instructions on how our citizens can be involved in Litter Blitz 2015.
All right. We are right on track to have another 12,000 volunteers out all over the city. We kick it off tomorrow, and you can contact Oklahoma City Beautiful at OKCBeautiful.com or give us a call, and we'll help you select an area, provide the bags. We've been picking up litter since Oklahoma City Beautiful was founded more than 45 years ago, and this is our 15th Litter Blitz. It's a wonderful partnership with the City of Oklahoma City. You just pick up your trash, set it on the curb, and the city comes by and picks it up. So, would love to help you join us. It's a wonderful opportunity to clean, clean up Oklahoma City, but it's also an educational tool to show people that just everybody can help, and if you don't throw it on the ground, we won't have to pick it up.
All right, so neighborhood associations, church groups, scout groups, educational organizations, just a handful of the organizations that it might be appropriate to call Oklahoma City Beautiful. And it's not just their organizational advice, but they also have materials. As I recall from the past, you've had the plastic bags and plastic gloves, because when you're asking people to pick up trash, there are a few things that it's helpful to provide. And so, 171,000 pounds of trash picked up last year. Let's see if we can't beat that this year, but in the meantime, let's show our appreciation and remind everyone in Oklahoma City that April is Litter Blitz Month, and we're going to make this a cleaner city by the time May gets here. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Mother Earth, good to see you. Terry, thanks for coming down. Good to see you, and we appreciate the corporate sponsors, too.
Mayor, while you're heading up, my office has participated, I think, all 15 years in Litter Blitz, and it's, besides helping, it's so much fun. We have a great day walking up and down Broadway, so encourage everybody to get involved.
This one from the bench, but I think we'll go ahead and do this one down here, too. Curtis Brown and Brent Ward, why don't you come forward? We have a special announcement, as the council will remember, and hopefully our citizens will too. The first MAPS 3 project to be completed was the lighting that took place on the Oklahoma City River that allows us to hold nighttime racing events, and it is now the only lighted rowing course in the world. And we are pleased to announce that the contractors went out and entered this into a national award, and I'm going to let them give you a little more of the details, but we are one for one. The first MAPS 3 project has already been given an award, and I'm going to let Curtis tell us more about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we entered this into the International Illumination Society for an award. There's over about 10,000 entrants in there. This project was one of the top finalists in the United States, top type 10%, and actually went in to compete for the international side. Though we did not win the top award internationally, we got the Award of Merit for Innovative Use of Lighting Controls and Illumination, and so we framed the award and the picture we took and presented it to the MAPS Office and Subcommittee, and we wanted to present that here to City Council and the city as well. This really is a very significant award, a little geeky, it's for engineering stuff, but I'm very proud of it as well.
Well, and we're proud of it, too, and I think of all the symbolic improvements that have been made in the city since we put water in it, you know, nearly 20 years ago now. I think the citizens are probably most proud of that river of all the MAPS projects because of what it means symbolically to the city, you know, knowing that it's where our city was founded back in 1889, and today it's so beautiful and draws national attention to us, and now people can see that at light, at night. So, congratulations, thank you for entering it on our behalf, and I know the MAPS staff will appreciate the award, and certainly it's justified recognition for them and the Subcommittee and the Advisory Board of Citizens who all played a part in this. So, this applause is for you, and thank you again for your role, and we look forward to more awards coming as the MAPS 3 projects come out.
Yes, thank you.
You bet. Thank you. All right, if you're following us on the council agenda, we're now on item three, and we have appointments on C, D, and E. I'll look for a motion. Okay, is there a second?
What, I guess I would ask that the council would be opposed to continually, just for one week, 3D. And I apologize, I didn't know this appointment was coming, and I just didn't get to talk to, I talked to Steve Hill yesterday. I have just a number of technical questions about these appointments, has nothing to do personally with the appointments, but just some technical questions about the Urban Renewal Authority, and Steve indicated that we ought to be able to get these questions and data over the next week, and I wonder if we could just continue that for just one week.
Well, it's certainly not my instinct to defer these for a week, but you can certainly ask for the deferral. Is there a second on the deferral? All right, so we're going to vote on the deferral. The deferral question is just for item 3D. Those two appointments, Ed?
Just, right.
Yeah, okay. All right, vote on the deferral, and the motion fails, 2-6. All right, we have a motion and a second on the appointments. Cast your votes.
Well, I need to, I don't know how to, I don't know what to, I don't have enough data to vote on 3D, so I can abstain?
Would you like us to vote on the other appointments, and so you can vote on that one separately? Okay, so I'll take the motion that's been made as a motion for item 3C and E, so this would not include the Urban Renewal appointments. So cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Now is there a motion on item 3D? Is there a second? All right, cast your votes. And that motion passes unanimously as well. We're on to item four, it's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item, item 4A is to receive the journal for March 24th, and item 4B is to approve the journal for March 17th. All right, any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just one this morning. On Friday afternoon, or Friday, the city reached a tentative agreement with IAFF regarding the labor contract, so I would ask that on page 10, item E, 1, 2, and 3 be struck. I'm sorry, on page 10, item 9, E, 1, 2, and 3.
Page, that's page 10, at least on my agenda.
Yeah, page 10, item 9, E, 1, 2, and 3.
E, 1, 2, and 3, okay. Any other comments on the journal? Any requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we're on to item six, it's revocable permits. We have the first coming to us from the March of Dimes Foundation to hold the March for Babies on May 2nd. This will be in Ward 6, and it looks like Brian Jacobson is here. Good morning.
Actually, my name is Tim Miller.
Okay. Oh, I got the wrong one here.
That's okay. Lifelong Oklahoma City resident, longtime March of Dimes board member since the 1980s. Our March for Babies event is coming up on Saturday, May 2nd. It's always the first Saturday in May. This is our single biggest fundraiser of the year, so it's very important to us. We should have maybe 3,000 participants. A lot of times that depends on the weather conditions, but if it's like today, we'll have 3,000 plus, so we're hoping for a beautiful day. We, our target this year is to raise in excess of $250,000, and we're just about there, so I think it'll be a very successful event. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Audrey George at the Bricktown Police Station. We always coordinate these things through Lieutenant George and also Drew Watson at Oklahoma City Special Events. They've been very good. They always are about working with us to get our route approved and to answer all of our questions. We coordinate everything through them, so we're looking forward to another successful walk.
All right, and how can people get involved in this if they'd like to?
They can, as, you know, in the age we live in, they can get online and register that way if they'd like to. They can call the March of Dimes Office in Oklahoma City. The staff is always willing to accommodate them. We have individual walkers, we have corporate teams, we have family teams. At the walk, you'll see a lot of mothers pushing strollers, babies that were born prematurely. A lot of our walkers, who are adults now, were born prematurely and were affected by the research and everything provided by the March of Dimes, so it's a great family event. We start at the Myriad Gardens, go north around the Oklahoma City Memorial, and then back south, and I'm glad Oklahoma City Beautiful is here. We always pick up our trash. That's one of my jobs at the walk is to pick up the trash, so, but we have a great team of volunteers, we have a great March of Dimes staff, and this is an event that I personally look forward to every year.
And it's May 2nd, is that a Saturday?
Saturday, May 2nd, yes.
All right, so encourage people to call the March of Dimes and sign up and be a part of this.
Absolutely, or you can show up the morning of the walk, we will accommodate everyone.
All right, is there a motion on item 6A1?
Move approval.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck with that event.
Thank you.
All right, item 6A2 is the color run. Is there anyone here representing this event today? I know it's had a successful run previously. This is in Ward 7. John, you want to make a motion on it?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on item 6A2, and it passes unanimously. We'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the MFA. Any comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, two items. All right, motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Adjourn the OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today. All right, cast your votes on the EAT, and it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, are there any individual considerations?
AJ.
And Mayor, if I could, 7M, I just wanted to get up to date on the municipal court complex.
Ed, you want to go ahead with AJ?
Have any kind of presentation, or just, or we just, I guess, I guess, I don't know who's here, is Brent or Kathy or?
David Todd's here. We do not have a presentation scheduled. What we've done is come back and with the withdrawing of the pursuing of the site, we're going back to reopen the process.
So, well, I guess, David, what, I have some confusion. I have some questions about just some things I've read in the media, and just, I didn't get to make it to the Convention Center Subcommittee, but I read some reporting of what happened there. It seems that we now have real data in terms of responses to our RFP for the Convention Center Hotel, that we had seven responses. I read a report in the Oklahman on Saturday, it said Oklahoma City Council decreases number of Convention Center Hotel applicants to four, and then the next day it changed it to Oklahoma City Committee decreases the number of proposals to four. And I'm, I guess I'm confused about what committee that is that decreased the number of proposals from seven to four. I have, I have questions about the proposals. If we're, now we're down to four, which looks like Omni, Hilton, Weston, and Hyatt, they all appear to have a total investment. all appear to have a total investment in the $200 million range, roughly. And it looks like, it looks like, I didn't get through all of them, I got through the Omni one and preliminary, some other ones. I mean, it seems like the bigger the hotel that you build, the more the public investment's required. So they're tagging it to a percentage, like 40 to 60%. So my, my reading of those four proposals is that a total investment of somewhere in the range of $200 million and a public investment somewhere in the range of 70 to $120 million. Is that, am I, am I reading that correctly?
Okay, Kathy can answer those better than David. That's not David's area of interest. However, this is a contract amendment on the populace contract to evaluate convention center sites.
Right.
Your questions have to do with proposals that were put out, or request for proposals that were put out for potential hotel, and, which is a different subject that Kathy can answer.
It is and it isn't, because there's two, there's two implications that to me would influence this contract and what exactly we're asking populace to do. We're asking populace to evaluate what's the best site for the convention center.
Yes.
But as, as we know, we're talking about a convention center complex, which involves more than the convention center. It's a convention center, parking, hotel. We now have real numbers. The last time we talked about the hotel, it was kind of theoretical. Are we going to have a public investment required or are we not? What would be the size of it? Well, now we have real numbers and they're substantial, on the order of 70 to 120 million. If, I mean, it's, it's an enormous, so it seems to me that it's time for the council to make a policy decision. Are we, now that we know that the, that the public investment is likely to be substantial, enormous, is that, are we, do we want to go down that path? Because that, whether we do or don't, would influence potentially what we're instructing populace to, to look for. The second question or implication would be, I'm still confused about what happens whether the hotel is publicly or privately owned. My understanding with the previous site is that we had some problems with eminent domain or there are implications in using eminent domain based on whether the hotel is publicly or privately owned. And so that's another policy decision that it would seem needs to be made by the council now before you move forward with populace, because it would influence what the land site would look like. Or whether or not eminent domain could be used. I mean, I would think that that would influence populace's thinking. So I guess, Kenny, let me just start with that. Kenny, can you explain the implications of a public versus a privately owned convention center hotel on the city's ability to use eminent domain?
Respectfully, that would actually be more appropriate if you brought that up during items from council. This really isn't that item. This is really just a, a contract, an amendment to a contract.
But if the city could or could not use eminent domain, wouldn't that influence populace's choices?
No. No.
I, I think it would. I think whether the land was publicly or privately owned, if eminent domain was no longer an option, if the council made a policy decision that we were going to do a hotel, that the hotel had to be publicly owned, that that would then eliminate all use of eminent domain, that would seem relevant to what we're asking populace to consider.
Well, first of all, I mean, I think that the council has already made a decision in the past about selecting a site for the convention center complex. And this amendment is to go back through that site selection process. But the decision to select a site for a hotel and a convention center and ancillary supporting uses was made several years ago by the city council. How the ownership of the parcel is broken up, though, is completely different than selecting the site. And I think ultimately, what, what I would recommend is that the hotel site be owned by urban renewal, which, which was what we would like to try to do during this new process, is that somehow we will, we will have urban renewal acquire the portion of the site that's required for the hotel. But I don't think that that has anything to do with this contract amendment or selecting the site itself. The site is still the site and we know what the components that are needed to go into that site. I don't know if Kenny or Jim have any different thoughts, but...
Would urban renewal owning the land allow it to be publicly or privately owned?
Yes.
It would give you more options?
Yes.
So, okay, so if the city, okay, if the city owned the land, you couldn't use eminent domain unless it was publicly owned?
Well, if you, if you used eminent domain for a public purpose such as, and you have to be specific, for a convention center and ancillary uses, the hotel might be difficult to justify under that. But urban renewal can acquire the site and could also use eminent domain for private development.
And if urban renewal obtained the site using their eminent domain authority, which is different than the city's authority.
Right.
The decision could still be made whether that could be a public or privately owned.
Yes.
How is, how is their authority different than the city's?
Spelled out very specifically different.
The Oklahoma Urban Renewal Law allows urban, excuse me, allows urban renewal to acquire property for private redevelopment. So they can acquire the property and then they can convey it to a private redeveloper.
Whereas the city cannot.
Right, it's...
By state statute.
It's a difference in the statutory authority under the state statute.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm happy to wait till items from council if that's, I mean, but I do have questions about the hotel. You want to just do it under items from council?
Probably be best.
Okay.
All right, Meg, item M.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this item actually is a rejection of the bids that we received for the municipal courts building. And I just was curious for an update. It looks like it came in over bid and...
It came in, actually, we, we had bid it right around Christmas time and it did come in over bid. And so we have chosen to reject the bids and put it back out for, do some redesign on it and bring it back, to bring it back for a, for a better price. We only had, it was one or two bidders. It was a very, two bidders, but we only had one bidder on some of the subcontractors. So I, I think we kind of got caught up in the Christmas rush a little bit and did not get as competitive of bidding as we would like on it. So it now has been, the plans have been changed a little bit and we are about to put it back out a bit again. Same general design.
Will it seriously impact the timeline for the complex?
I'm sure we've lost three to four months.
What, about three months, Eric? All righty, thank you.
Any other comments on the consent docket?
I, I do have one final question on the convention center contract. If, if we were to go back to the Ford dealership site and we were to make that decision at different times, are we committed to this $265,000? I mean, we, we don't get a refund, for example, I mean...
Well, no, we can, there's cancellation provisions in it. So, I mean, they will do the work provided. Now, they're going to start pretty quick, because I know there's a meeting scheduled with populace, I think, for later this week. So I think that we're, we're going to start this process and go fairly quickly through it. But no, if we get into a week of it, we pay a week's worth of work or we can cancel the amendment at some point in time if we choose to do so.
Okay, and then that would save whatever...
Remainers left on the work undone.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. On to the concurrence docket.
We do have a presentation on the concurrence docket. Dennis, or Dennis, Eric is going to talk to us this morning about some of the improvements that are being planned for Bricktown.
Yeah, how about a motion on the concurrence?
Move the concurrence docket subject to individual consideration.
All right, is there a second? All right, yeah, Eric?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present to you this morning the item that's actually already been considered by the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust. This is for the Bricktown infrastructure improvements, which include a number of items that you can expect to see here soon in the canal and Bricktown ballpark areas. And so as we talk a little bit about the history of Bricktown, we're going to do some background, some scope, and then the schedule of the work. As many of you may, or may not know, but Bricktown was actually established in September of 1985. It was, it was very small at that point, but obviously the two monumental projects, the original MAPS 1 projects, the ballpark which opened in 1998, and then the canal actually opened in 1999, really transformed that district. 2007 marked the 1,000,000th water taxi passenger on the Bricktown canal.
Wow.
So obviously, a tremendous amount of activity in Bricktown. Since those two projects opened, there's been a tremendous amount of redevelopment, just a host of activities. As we look at this particular slide, it's in, there's a blue shading that you'll actually see that's overlaid on this map. But it was a study area. We've seen a lot of what we would expect, just normal wear and tear on a lot of facilities. Sidewalks, handrails, some of the painted systems, landscaping. But the study area included the areas Main Street to Reno and the elevated railroad tracks to Russell Perry. So we actually engaged a consultant to go out and look at a variety of items that could be updated and help us put together some cost proposals for that work. So several areas were found not to be ADA compliant. There were sidewalks along natural walking paths. This would be where maybe individuals were finding a shorter distance to get from point A to point B and not necessarily using the sidewalk. We're also starting to find some areas that were difficult to maintain, you know, be maintenance from vehicles. There's some wear on the handrails and stairs and sidewalks that I mentioned, some coverage concerns for some of the irrigation systems. And then the last item is the low street lighting levels in some particular areas. They've still got some of the old gas lamp systems that are not operational anymore. So when we looked at the scope, there were two phases that were included in the preliminary report. And what you're considering approving today, the final plans and the concurrence to actually award the contract is for phase one. It's the painting of the bridges, walkways and handrails, sidewalks and ramp improvements, stair improvements, and some landscaping. There is some additional study that's underway for phase two to continue some of these improvements as we go into the future. So the area of focus is really that area of the Bricktown Canal, as you see on the left, the elevated railroad tracks, the canal as it stretches down the old California Street, turning south, Mickey Mantle Drive to the north edge of Reno Avenue. And so this is what's included in the item today. $660,000 for the painting, the sidewalks, the stair improvements, and some landscaping. We're already looking at a phase two project at some point in the future, but that would include the lifts, the elevators, additional landscaping and irrigation, and some of the street lighting for an estimated cost of $800,000. So the schedule of this work, we're hoping with your approval today to begin in April, have that work finished up this summer. And then phase two is still in development, but we would hope to be able to possibly begin that later this year or early '16. So with that, we haven't answered any questions you might have on this item.
Any comments or questions for Eric?
As a lifelong baseball fan, I can't help but comment on the fact that you misspelled Mickey's name in the presentation.
My apologies, Mr. Counsel.
The street was named after Mickey Mantle, not the restaurant. Just a little notice, couldn't resist it.
Before Eric sits down, may I ask a question on item number eight?
Mm-hmm.
Eric, can you give me an update as to the expected completion date for Portland Avenue from 54th all the way to 104th Street?
Portland's actually being constructed in a couple of phases, and that first phase is nearly complete. The item that, let me get back to this one. We're actually just amending this contract today to actually incorporate some of the detention pond work, and I need to probably just get back to you on the, on the final schedule. Let me make sure that I get that incorporated with the work that you're considering today to be approved. And then I'd be happy to do that after council today.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the concurrence, ready to vote? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine is items that require a separate vote. The first is a list of dilapidated structures. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here hoping to speak or any item listed under 9A? Yeah, come on up.
Good morning.
We will need your name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm Ken Champlin, 21831 North Timberwood, Arcadia, Oklahoma. I came here on behalf of Mini Moons LLC and a piece of property that I purchased at 2116 North Rhode Island.
Okay.
And it, property was in pretty bad shape when I got it. And we've, you know, painted the building, sanded the floors, all that kind of thing. However, there is a detached garage. The roof is caving in on. And I broke my femur in three places, January 2014. So I pretty much missed most of last year and I wasn't able to do the repairs to the roof of that garage. And recently, I found the yellow sticker on it and I had spoken to the inspector. And I went down and got a building permit to make the repairs. I just wanted you guys to give me some more time.
Can you see the pictures that we're seeing here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, to my untrained mind, that looks beyond repair. You're, you're going to fix that?
All the wood on the walls is good wood. It's just the roof is, those roof rafters are bad. So we're going to tear the whole top of it off, finish the siding, and paint it, and I think it would look good.
When are you wanting to get started on this?
Some, next few weeks. I got a permit just Friday.
Okay, well, let's, let me hear from staff here and see. Charles, what, what can you add to this?
Well, it's in bad shape, but if you put enough money into it, you can fix anything. So we'll, we'll work with him in that first 30 days to see if he can start his process.
Okay, you think you can get started in the next 30 days?
Oh, sure.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll leave it on the list and you'll have 30 days, but I would encourage you to stay in contact with staff and Charles can give you contact information if you need to. But I'm, I'm sure your neighbors would appreciate that, looking a little better than it does today.
Right.
All right, thanks for coming down.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9A? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9B?
Move the items.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes on 9B and it passes unanimously. And 9C is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of the items listed under 9C? All right, how about a motion?
Move the items.
Cast your votes and it passes unanimously. Item 9D has to do with a tax anticipation note and Brent's going to give us a presentation on what this consists of.
Yes, Counsel. In April of 2014, the Economic Development Trust authorized a $10 million line of credit with the JP Morgan Chase. At the time, at that time, we had originally requested a RFP for a $15 million line of credit. The bank came back and gave us two options. You can do a $10 million line of credit at a lower interest rate, or you can do a $15 million line, line of credit with a little higher interest rate, and they were also going to charge us for not using the line of credit. At that time, we made the decision to go ahead with the smaller $10 million line of credit. This line of credit is needed for short-term purposes, as we have 16 projects right now that are coming to fruition, that are, that are completing, that exceeds over $100 million worth of investment. And so what we're asking for you today is to increase that line of credit from $10 million to $18 million. It'll also extend the maturity of this line of credit from June 30 of '15 to June 30 of '16. And typically, we have utilized lines of credit with TIF District Number 2 and TIF District Number 4. And we utilize the, it's a 30-day LIBOR rate, which currently, right now, is 17 basis points. So with the spread that we have, we're paying it right at 77 basis points annual, is our annual rate. So it's very inexpensive money. One of the things that we did pursuant to the debt policies that you approved about a month ago or six weeks ago, we did a little stress test to look at the projected cash flows of the TIF District and, and looked at it. And we anticipate, and it's included in your packet, that we'll be able to pay this debt off in the next, within the next five years. The plan is to pay interest the first, the end of this fiscal year and the end of the next fiscal year. And subsequent to that, when the $100 million worth of investment that's occurring right now starts hitting the tax rolls, because there's, there's a delay, the things that are completing today, we'll start to see the incremental increase in taxes in the 16 and 17 years and at that time. So at that time, we will, we anticipate paying the principal off in years 18, 19, and 20. And so, and our TIF District actually expires June 30... And so, and our TIF District actually expires June thirty of twenty-twenty-six, and we'll get our final payment in June of twenty-twenty-seven, so we have plenty of time to pay this off.
All right, any questions for Brent on item nine D?
I'd just like some risk analysis, language I can understand.
On the risk analysis, what we did is we looked right now, our, our interest, current interest rates are seventy-seven basis points. We did an analysis of, I increased that to ninety and looked at the cat, anticipated cash flows, anticipated payouts of projects, and we were able to make that interest payments for this month and the next, or this year and next fiscal year, and then we'll start making principal payments. What I did then is we increased it to five percent. What if interest rates go up five percents? And at that case, we were still able to make that.
Go up to five percent?
Yeah, yes, go up to five percent. And so from a little under one percent up to five percent, we were still able to, to make payments and to fund projects as they've been, as funds have been allocated.
You say when the, when the projects go on the tax rolls, that, that money will, will come back. How does that come back to us?
The, the way, the way that that happens is we had a significant amount of projects that are completed as of December thirty-first of fourteen, will be assessed as of January one of fifteen at that higher rate based on the increase in value, and those tax bills will go out in November of fifteen, half is due by the end of December, and the other half is actually due today, March thirty-first. So then we get that money from the county assessor in June of the subsequent year. So there's a lag time of about eighteen months when the money starts coming, when the incremental taxes start coming into us. So that's essentially what we're, why we need the line of credit.
But how, what changes if we do a, a TIF within a TIF?
Right now, that, it won't necessarily change at all, because when you look at the amount of taxes that are being generated from the TIF District right now, we anticipate around seven points, I believe it is, seven point two million dollars to come in this June, and, and then the next year, it'll be closer to nine million dollars. And so the prob, depending on which parcels you're looking at, I, I need to know more specifics which ones you're wanting, what you're talking about, but.
Well, let's say you did both the Cordishore TIF and the South Central Business District TIF.
The Cordishore would have zero impact because the Cordishore TIF location preliminary thoughts are not in the current TIF District Number Two increment district. If you'll recall, TIF District Number Two increment goes from the old I-40 up to Thirteenth Street. Now, the project area goes all the way down south past the river. So that would have zero impact. The South Central CBD, I believe it would have maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollar impact on that seven hundred and twenty thousand, seven point two million dollar increment that we're receiving right now. So it's, it would be, it's significant, but it's minimal comparison to the overall amount.
And what, what are we doing with the eighteen million again?
We're utilizing, we have sixteen projects. I'll give you some examples. The Quiet Zone, O-triple-C, we have projects that are coming to fruition, the Midtown projects with their garage and the things they did with the Marion Hotel, the Century Center, COTPA, we supported COTPA in doing improvements to the parking garage in the Century Center. Oklahoma County, we're supporting, we have a project, we're helping them with their parking garage, the Bricktown Infrastructure Project that we just approved today. There's a downtown sidewalk program, the Level West, which is also known as Mosaic, if you, over in Deep Deuce in that area, the Twenty-One C Project, the Midiki Project, Rock Island Plow, the Steel Yard, which I'll approve that agreement today on that, OCU Law School, the Criterion, and then then Underground HVAC Project. Those are the sixteen projects that, when I look at my cash flows over the next sixteen, fourteen to sixteen months, we need this, funds for cash flow purposes essentially.
All right.
Move approval.
We're voting on item nine D. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Thanks, Brent. Item nine E has been struck from the agenda, and it looks like item nine F can be struck. Is there a motion to strike? We don't need executive session on this item today.
Is there a strike?
Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, we're voting on nine F to strike it from the agenda. That item is struck from the agenda. Item nine G is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine G? All right, how about a motion to move these forward?
Move the items.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item ten is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of the items listed under item ten? All right, how about a motion here?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item eleven is items from council. Meg, you want to get us started?
Sure, Mayor. I really wanted to thank the OCPD for the great work they did on Friday night in downtown. We had throngs of people at the opening night for H and Eighth, Industry Flea, Blue Garden was bursting at the seams, and, you know, I'd been concerned all along about what Tenth Street was going to, how Tenth Street was going to work, and they had officers on every corner, they closed down lanes, they were helping people get back and forth across the street. They really did a terrific job. It was an exciting Friday, but I think all went well. Yesterday was the opening of the first-ever animal conference over at the Skirvin Hotel that was sponsored by the Kirkpatrick Foundation. They had speakers in from all over the country, very successful attendance, and, you know, we've worked, I think Kirkpatrick Foundation has certainly worked closely with our animal welfare folks, with the Humane Society, and they have a very wonderful goal to have the state of Oklahoma be the best state for animal welfare in the country by two thousand and thirty-two or something. It's a, it's a long-range goal, but they're bringing a lot of people to the table, and we had at least three of our staff in attendance, our Julie Bank was there, our new director of animal welfare, and it was a terrific program. And last night was also the twentieth anniversary celebration of Wiz Kids, and I saw former councilman Sam Bowman there. It's a wonderful program, primarily staffed by volunteers from the faith-based community, tutoring and mentoring kids. The Cox Center was filled to capacity with volunteers. It was a really terrific event. And finally, yesterday and today, I, last night was the opening, and today, today all day at the Civic Center, at the, yeah, the Civic Center is the World Creativity Forum, and it was, I thought, a very nice event last night that was hosted, and Oklahoma City, for those that aren't aware, Oklahoma City is one of only thirteen centers of creativity around the world, and we're the only one in the U.S. So it's a wonderful combination. We, we often think about creativity only in the arts, but it's really designed to focus on, on business and science and, as well as the arts, education in particular. And so it, the conference is scheduled all day today, if anybody has some time. They're great speakers. Thank you.
Uh-huh. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, OU held their placemaking conference, and I was not able to attend. I think a couple of members of the council did attend. But two days after that, the placemaking conference, along with the Oklahoma City chapter of ULI, hosted Gil Penalosa, one of the speakers. He's the chairman of the Eight-Dash-Eighty Cities. It's a, a, a foundation that helps improve the livability of cities, especially for those eight years or eighty years old. And he had a lot of great ideas, and one of them continued to focus on making our downtown area, he didn't suggest this, this is my idea, a more walkable location, and the way to do that is to eliminate automobile traffic in the downtown area, put a greater emphasis on walking, bicycling, and public transportation. And I think one way for us to become more comfortable with that idea is possibly closing sections of the downtown area, say, on a particular Friday, once a month throughout the summer area, summer timeframe, just to give businesses the opportunity to expand their offerings out onto the sidewalks, allow pedestrian traffic to move out to the streets and see what happens. In many of the cities where the emphasis is used to reduce automobile traffic and replace it with pedestrian traffic, business flourishes. Many times, they, they think it'll damage the success of their business, but what they find is it tends to increase it significantly. So I'm just asking if our staff could work with Ian Carlton, the director of the OU Placemaking Center, and perhaps representatives from ULI, and I would suspect we need the assistance of Downtown Oklahoma City, Inc., to look into the idea of possibly closing sections of the downtown area to automobile traffic for one day, and if we, you know, we could work in conjunctions with Eight on Eighth, for example, close it that day, and then they would shift the activities further north, or with some of the free concerts that occur during the summer here in the Oklahoma City area. Now, many people will be resistant to that, but I kind of think those are the people we tend not to invite to parties just because they don't enjoy things normally. But if they get used to the idea, I think they'll see how successful it can be. And we had a study just last week that was released with respect to improving retail along Park Avenue. The potential is there. We just need to do some things to help encourage a stronger retail area in downtown Oklahoma City, and I think this would go a long ways. We need to do it with a lot of planning so people can prepare for it, but again, if we could shift business activity out onto the sidewalk, move pedestrian traffic out to the streets, I suspect will, those businesses will have a very successful day. Thank you.
Pete?
A couple of things. First is that I personally, and also in my role as a councilman, appreciate the resolution of the fire contract matter. I think that's, hopefully, that's a harbinger of, of future negotiations and our ability to deal with it without litigation. It, it's also something that's been brought to, to the fore, I think, is the, the separate insurance that FIRE has compared to the rest of the city officials, their health insurance is separate. One of the things that, that was about, that separation, at least on the surface it appears, that one of the things was that they were trying to provide, they are, they, they are trying to provide by this separate fund that they have, a stabilization fund, if you will, to stabilize insurance rates for retired firefighters that retire under that fund. Seems to me that's a laudable goal, and, and perhaps that might be a way to start a conversation with them about returning the fire department to our, to our insurance plan. I've long felt that our ability to stabilize rates for retired people that are on fixed incomes was a, was a hole in our, in our policy. I recognize what it costs to do it, but if there was a rate there, if a person could contribute as, while they were an employee, they could contribute to a rate stabilization fund, which is what that fund that FIRE now has in their program, is, is one of the aspects of, of it is supposed to be able to stabilize those rates. Maybe we could do something about our, the situation we have now and get them back in. I, I think the fact that they're outside of the city's retirement, I mean, health insurance fund is a, is a contentious division that we ought to try to find a way to resolve. Everybody else in the city's under one plan, they're under another plan. It has, I thought a couple of years ago, when we made an adjustment to how we dealt with that, that we wouldn't have to talk about it anymore. But now again, it's, it was the absolute point of contention again. I'd like to see us enter into some conversation with no, no pre-conceived ideas of how it's going to wind up, of bringing the fire department back in. I don't know whether they want to come back in. I've had some indications they might be willing to talk about it, and I think we ought to reach out, and I think we ought to look at our own plan to see if there's not a way to contribute extra while you're working and making a good salary to offset the escalating cost of retirees' insurance. There, we've got a lot of smart folks around here, and somebody might be able to figure that out. But I just, I appreciate the fact where we settled that contract. I mean, they, it's obviously asked to go out to a vote of their membership, and it always hinges on a positive vote. I'm hopeful that will return positively. But the idea that we can move on without continuing to discuss that problem is a good thing, I think, and it's, it's a harbinger, I hope, of a, of a change in how we, how we make those things happen.
Had a positive vote of council.
Yes.
And we'd be happy to pursue some conversations in regard to that.
Right. I, I just, I think there's just something out there in this idea of stabilizing rates for retirees that maybe we could find a solution to. I know if, I know what firefighters made in the eighties, and many of them retired on those, in the eighties, on those terms. I know what those retirees draw now. I know what the relationship is between the health insurance premium for them and the health insurance premium is to people that retire today with advanced salaries. And I, you know, we've looked for ways to fix it and not been able to do that. But somehow or other, when you think about a dollar or two dollars on a person that has a very low pension, has an impact. It may not have an impact if your pension is ninety percent of what your salary was or eighty percent of what your salary was when you're working, but it has a heck of an impact on it if your, if your retirement check's four hundred dollars. And I just think we ought to find a way to fix it, if we can. The other comment is, couldn't help but notice the front page of the paper promoting, or not perhaps, that's a bad word, concerning the idea that Oklahoma City start, have the, have the ability to open charter schools, despite the fact that nobody on this council's ever asked for that, that the school board, the board president and the school board itself does not want it. In fact, we probably have the best relationship with a local school district of any city in the state. I mean, beginning with Math for Kids, continuing right now through the, the number of, through the joint task force that meets monthly between the city and I-89, with the number of volunteers that serve as mentors and board members of the academies. We probably have the, the new downtown grade school. Nobody, no city can hold themselves up in, in Oklahoma as having a better relationship with our center-city school system. I, I could just go on forever about the number of things that the legislature has deemed that they know more about than the local people, the taxis, the automobiles, smoking, all those things. And they're wrong on every one of those counts, and if they vote for this, they're going to be wrong again. This is a mistake. If you're going to try to help cities, it would seem to me you'd come and ask the folks that are involved in, in, in city government. You wouldn't just take it on yourself to decide. Some preconceived idea, in my view, that you must have, because if you look at the system that's working now, it's working. This new grade school that opened in downtown Oklahoma City first accepted children from a boundary district, didn't come close to filling it up. Then they accepted people that worked downtown, that lived in the system, didn't come close to filling it up. Then they accepted people from all over Oklahoma City, didn't come close to filling it up. They had to go to Norman and Edmund to get the kids to bring down here. That space right there could be utilized by the folks that, that somehow. That space right there could be utilized by the folks that somehow feel like they're being mistreated. They could come downtown. They don't have, we don't have to be in the business. Does anybody around here have any experience in operating a school? I don't think so. None. And I just don't think we need any, we need to be thrown in that situation. And I would appreciate anybody in the legislature that has a chance to vote in the House side, vote against it when it comes up.
Okay. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. David, I appreciate your comments about downtown and Park Avenue and retail. That was an idea that I shared with a couple of people over the last several months. Didn't get anywhere, so I'm going to pass that baton on to you as the leader, because I have had personal experience in Denver, Colorado, and Burlington, Vermont, where they do have an area downtown blocked off from vehicular traffic. And it does promote retail, it does promote community, it does promote involvement. So I pass that on to you and wish you well as you take that charge up the hill, all right? I've got your six, as they say. On another matter, I was privileged with Joanne Saturday night to be able to attend the firefighters' awards banquet, and to see the valor that was displayed in the awards, the life-saving rescues that those gentlemen and ladies accomplished was encouraging and heartwarming, and my congratulations to the fire department and Chief Brian for the character and the boldness and the ingenuity and the initiative that those gentlemen and ladies take. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah?
I just want to say amen to everything David said also. I mean, there's so much empirical data in large cities, not just in America, but in Europe and Asia, and all you have to do is look at best practices and what these major corridors that have large amounts of pedestrian activity and retail, what they have in common, and I think it all leads back to what you were just saying. So all, the data's there, I think everybody's, and so I appreciate your comments. I appreciate what Pete said on the schools and also on the fire insurance. I wish we could have kind of a public discussion, because I find some of the insurance issues confusing. Maybe Phil Syte, George, I wish we could have, maybe during the budget process here in a couple of months, we could talk about the differences between the city and FIRE's insurance and how we arrived at some of the numbers that we arrived at. I think that would help me a great deal to have, to hear from both parties at the same time would help me a great deal. So on the, just to continue on the convention center hotel questions, I guess the first question is, reading in the paper this weekend about, first it said Oklahoma City Council, then it said a commission, who exactly is the commission that decreased the number of proposals from seven to four?
The city manager appointed a selection committee to review the RFPs in accordance with the city's professional services request for proposals process. The members of the committee were Councilman McAtee, Councilman Greenwell, myself, Craig Freeman, and Tom McDaniel from the MAPS Advisory Committee.
So what's the, what was the general criteria in getting from seven to four?
We looked at experience, the financial qualifications of the firm, their, you know, involvement in past similar projects, and how responsive they were to the RFP. You know, did they, did they fully respond to all of the requirements in the RFP? I will say that this first process was more of a review of qualifications so that we can narrow it down to a short list of four. And then that list of firms will be asked to provide much more in-depth additional information back to the city so that we can further evaluate the proposals. We did not evaluate any of the pro forma information that the firms provided as a part of this process. And in fact, you know, we will, we will be doing more of that in the second part of the process and have a much better idea of, you know, whether the hotel will be publicly or privately owned, the advantages and disadvantages of that with each of the different firms, and then how much subsidy is required from each of them. You know, we're asking each of them to minimize the amount of public subsidy that we expect them to put, to put their own money into this project, that it isn't just the city's money. So all of those things will be a part of the second part of the process.
But there, the four, the pro formas, and they are kind of brief, I mean, looking at them, they're not in great detail on the RFP that I read, but they are all consistent. They're all, for a 600-room hotel, they're about $200 million, and they all want the same ballpark of public subsidy, which is 40 to 60%. Is that, am I reading that?
Yeah, I think you're correct, but that doesn't mean that that's where we're going to end up.
I understand that, but just in terms of what they're saying to us
Yeah.
Is about 200 million for a 600-room, and about 40 to 60% of the cost would be public investment.
I think that's a correct assumption about what they provided to us.
Am I reading it correctly, that when they're saying 200 million and 40 to 60% is a public investment, that that doesn't include land and garage and meeting space?
I don't know that we have enough detail from the pro formas that we got from them to evaluate that, but I'm assuming that, you know, eventually we'll look at it all in, and we didn't, we didn't get that level of detail at this stage.
But, I mean, Omni was very clear with a disclaimer at the bottom that this does not include the cost of land and parking garage. So the cost would likely go, would be more than 200 million, and the public investment could be more than that 40 to 60%.
Right. Well, I don't know that it would be more than 40 to 60% of the entire project. As the project amount went up, the 40 to 60% may stay the same as a percentage.
But are we ready to say that this is going to require a sizable public investment?
I think we've been saying for some time now that this will require a public investment. Whether, what sizable means, I don't know at this stage.
Well, I mean, the last time with Tom Morrison, we said that it may require public sub, I mean, there was still that holding out that we don't know if it's going to require public, can we, are we now to the point where we know it is going to require a public investment, sizable or otherwise?
I think we can say that.
Thank you.
I'm going to disagree with Kathy, because I'm on the committee
Okay.
And I have not come to that position. So that's one, that's only one, and the committee knows that, all right? I'm for zero public investment.
Well, I know you're for that, but is there anything that you read in the RFPs that would lead you to believe that we could do it without?
Yes.
What was that?
Look at fine print on some of the, and some of the developers. Some of them own the property entirely themselves. Some of them have funded projects out of their own cash flow. Are they willing to do that here? We don't know.
Well, I, I mean, I've, I mean, I've looked at all four of the finalists. I mean, the most private equity I saw was the Omni, who was willing to put in 120 million and completely own it, but they want 70 million from us. I mean, I'm just, I'm not sure how you'd get from 70 million to zero, and that's 70 million without the cost of the land or the parking. So I'm not, that, to me, looked like the most favorable, the least public investment, and that's 70 million plus parking plus land. But you're, but you think we might be able to get that to zero?
I don't think I said we're going to, I said it's my goal to get it to zero. That's my desire, that's a personal desire that I'm sharing, all right? Am I successful? I'm only one member of the committee, and I don't make the decisions that Omni makes as far as what they're going to propose.
Did any of the proposals include meeting rooms in the pro forma?
They were all asked to include some meeting room space.
No, I know they would have meeting room space, but in terms of the cost of the hotel and the public subsidy?
Yes, that's all, that's all part of the cost of the hotel.
I guess, I just, I guess I'm just looking for a policy direction, and whatever it is from the council, then that's, I can accept that. I just want to know what that is. I mean, if we're, if we're willing to do a TIF within a TIF to help pay for a 70 to $120 million investment, then now I would understand. I just, I don't understand where we're going. To me, it's obvious, the writing on the wall is obvious, that it's going to be a massive public investment. We don't have that kind of cash laying around. It's going to require some type of action by the council, whether that's a TIF within a TIF or something, to come up with 70 to 120 million. And I just would like to know if that's where we're going. If it is, fine, then I understand.
Ed, may I say this? You know, we are still, or this will be a competitive process, and if we look at it from the companies submitting the proposals, they're at this stage trying to put together the best deal possible. And so they have to further evaluate the potential revenue they'll generate and what kind of profit they'll generate. When they throw a number out there to begin with, and I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody, but let's just continue with your example that you used, a company will say, you know what, if it's going to cost us 200 million, and we don't have to pay for the land, and the municipality's going to contribute 70 million, we know even in the worst or very bad conditions, we'll make a nice profit on it. But then you've got these three other potential bidders, you know, and they'll say, well, you know what, now that we began to look at the numbers and we see what the potential is for Oklahoma City, we think we can do it for 50 million dollars of assistance. And then another one may say, well, you know what, given the data we've now been able to develop, we think we can ensure a profit either to our stockholders or to our owners of X percent, and all we need is 40 million. I'm just using those as examples. I think what I'm trying to say is, we're still in a competitive framework, and to come out publicly and say, we will give up to 100 million dollars of public assistance, kind of puts us at a disadvantage at this point.
I totally understand that, and I understand opening postures and negotiations. It wouldn't make sense for them to put their best and final offer in their initial RFP, but the numbers that they're putting out, 70 to 120 million, are in the ballpark of what every other city has had to do. For it, so it may not be 70 million, even if it's 40 million, which is just a number that I assume you randomly came, it's going to be a number, unless Oklahoma City is able to do something that no other city has been able to do in America in modern history, recent history. We're going to have to come up with an amount of money that we do not have on hand, which would then require an action of the council to come up with a new revenue stream. It, I'm not, whether it's 40 or 50 or 60 or 70 or 80 million, that's all to be negotiated, but it's going to be a sizable number, and it's going to be a number, an amount of cash that we do not have sitting in the bank account. Is, I mean, that, is that a fair statement?
Oh, it is, and I personally, not speaking on behalf of the committee or the council, recognize that we may have to come up with some form of public assistance to complete this project. My only position is, why state that at this point in time, since we don't know all the facts at this point in time? Let the committee continue to talk with these four potential companies and gain more information, both allow them to gain more information, allow us to gain more information, and then at some point in time, we'll be able to come back to the council and say, okay, based upon the negotiations with all four of these companies, we now have a pretty good idea, because we've narrowed down, you know, the extremes from number four to number one, as far as what they're wanting, what they can offer us. And now, we come back to the council and say, this is the range we have to be willing to agree to if we want to move forward with this. And then at that point in time, the council could say, no, we're not interested, let's just terminate the idea of having a convention hotel, or, yeah, we like this, we see the plan to where the city's going to recover that investment, and we think it's a doable deal. I mean, I just don't know if we have enough information at this point in time to ask the council for any kind of commitment or any kind of a decision, is all I'm suggesting. Not that we'll withhold it for any length of time, but just to, in an effort to try to gain more information.
I think the fact that we're not dismissing it out of hand says that we're willing to entertain this kind of subsidy. I guess there are a lot of reasons why I would want to know what the council's policy is today. One is, if the way that we're going to finance this is the creation of a TIF within a TIF and the diversion of tax from one jurisdiction to a convention center hotel, I think the public deserves to know that sooner rather than later, not like, you know, it's, the public is notified and then within 30 days, we're voting on it. I think something that important and transformative and desert, the public deserves to know that with now.
Well, I mean, I don't mean to speak on behalf of Kathy or anybody else, but we may not know what the potential funding sources for the public assistance may be at this point in time, either the type, or if we were to look at a TIF, the size of that TIF, how big or how small would it have to be? So, I mean, I don't know what we would be asking for approval at this point in time.
Well, if you're trying to get more than 50 million dollars, there's a limited number of ways you can do that. I mean, there's not a wide range of options to get 50 to 120 million dollars.
And actually, Ed, we've been talking about these ideas. I mean, these are some of the arrows that we have in our quiver for economic development. We've taken some steps already to begin to put together a TIF. So I, you know, I don't think this is new conversation, I don't think anybody in the public is surprised that we're having a conversation about creating some additional TIFs to provide financing vehicles for us. We don't have
Okay.
50 million dollars lying around, as you say, no municipality does. And so that's why there are statutory opportunities to provide financing for this kind of economic development project. But I have to agree with David, I don't feel like I have nearly enough information about what it's going to look like, where it's going to be, what's going to be required. I just think we're continuing to explore. I'd love to be on Larry's team and, you know, do something creative and maybe have nothing. We don't know that yet, and I think we're tying ourselves up a little bit if we try to predict too far in the future what this structure looks like.
Okay.
I'd also like to point out that this is not the first time we've done something along those lines. 15 years ago, we worked with the Renaissance and put 10 million dollars, different bids. Different time, different scenario we were trying to respond to, but we certainly had public engagement, involvement in financing in that deal. A few years later, seven years ago or so, we had the same challenges with the Skirvin, and we didn't know exactly what the Skirvin was going to look like. It was a very difficult project to put together, we didn't know exactly which tools in our quiver, as Meg said, we had to use to put that together and to make that. And again, that's not the same as this one, it's different, but there was, you know, based upon the investment, there was a lot more percentage of public involvement in the Skirvin than I think we anticipated, seeing, and the higher, the percentage in the Skirvin was much higher of public participation. We don't know at this point in time, we don't know where it's going to be. Obviously, as somebody pointed out earlier, the first number that they throw out is probably not the number we're going to end up with. We negotiate whether every TIF deal that comes down the line, we always go with the pro formas, we evaluate, we evaluate the risk, we try to bring a little reality to it, and it's always a different number.
Pete, you want to say something?
Yeah. What I was going to say, kind of following up now on what Jim said, I was going to ask for some kind of a report as to, to the extent we've done this in the past. I know we did it in the Skirvin, and I didn't recall the Renaissance, but I'd like to know the dollar amounts that we've done this in the past. Secondly, if you take the bottom number, 70 million, and then you add the land cost and the construction cost for the parking, you're well over 10% of the total amount, and that's all coming out of the taxpayers' pocket one way or another, you're well over 10% of what the value of the original MAPS project was in the first place. Is there any, is there any historical data that shows that we have done this for other MAPS projects, that they bust, their budget is busted by? And this, you can say it's not a budget buster, but it is. We didn't tell people that we're going to have to spend 70 million on a hotel, we didn't tell people we're going to have to build a parking garage, we didn't tell people we're going to have to acquire the land for the hotel. I was there, many of us that are around here were there, that wasn't discussed at all. It was 770 million, that's what we talked about. Is there any example? Is there any example in the past of a particular project busting its budget to the extent that the hotel, I mean, that the convention center is busting its budget, that we could say, yes, we went ahead and did that? I frankly don't think, the question's rhetorical, because I'm sure there's not, but I'd like to know if there's one that we did any.
Well, the Renaissance is a perfect example. I mean, that's what MAPS won, the hotel improvements, the convention center improvements, required the Renaissance Hotel subsidy that came in. If you're talking philosophically, it was exactly the same thing.
And that was a 10 million dollar subsidy?
No, it was less than that.
Well, it depends how you look at it.
Well, do you think the catering deal in?
There's catering, there's a sidewalk, and then there was, how much money, several million dollars was put into FFNE through CBGDG? There are three components on it that we can quantify for you.
I can't remember, it was 3 to 5 million in CDBG money that went for FFNE.
I think it could have been as much as 6.
And then there's the sidewalk, and then there was.
And with a straight face, we would say 3 to 5 million.
No, I think it was 6, I think Meg's right.
6 million. We would say in 1995 or whenever that was done.
That was done '99.
What?
'98 or '99.
'98. But that's the same as 120 million now?
No.
I mean, it seems to me, at some point in time, when you bust the budget, the public is entitled to have a say in it.
Well, I think if you looked at the amount of subsidy that we put into that project as a percent of the total cost of that hotel, it's probably about the same. With the Skirvin, we have almost a 50% subsidy in that hotel, so.
And by the way, the parking, there's a revenue stream off the park.
Yeah, the parking is.
And so the parking, that's a little bit of a red herring to say that the parking is an additional cost on that, because parking is going to be done, but there'll be revenue generated off the parking that'll offset the capital construction costs. They don't want to have to pay, put that additional equity in for the parking. And so there's.
You know, I guess I have a problem with the fact that this project was the least popular project on the MAPS. Any, all the polling showed, this would not have passed without being drug along by sidewalks and all the other stuff that was thrown onto it to make this pass. And yet, and we spent all of our time on it, we spent all of our money on it, this council didn't even have the courage to force the advisory committee to finish the project out of, the sidewalk project, out of their own budget. We took it out of our budget to do it, and my view is, is because the pressure was, don't take anything out of the contingency, because we know, I knew at the time, the hotel's going to blow the budget. And so this is, this tail wagged the dog, there's no question about it. We spent all our time talking about it, we're spending all our money on it, we're taxing ourselves, and it, the people I represent could literally care less. They could care less. And I suspect, if you had a poll today, the people of this city could care less. We are just, we've got ourselves going down this path, the budget seems not to matter. We get this, we just got through cutting it off because of poor management on both sides, in my opinion, to acquire the land. We let a piece of land that we thought we'd acquire for 13 million dollars get escalated to 106 million dollars, and we waited until it got impossible, and I'm not even sure the 106 million dollars was what busted it. What busted it was the fact that we're going to have to take the land by urban renew, by eminent domain, and so we'd had the old hotel, I think we'd probably paid the 106 million dollars. There's probably votes here to do that. I just don't understand it. I don't understand how one project that had the least approval rating, I'm repeating myself, aren't I? I still don't understand it. I do not understand it. It makes no sense to me, and never any discussion about, why don't we go fix this, why don't we do that? Nothing. It is how are we going to get the money to build this convention center? That's it. I mean, it's virtually every meeting, every discussion I have at a neighborhood meeting is about, not about how you're going to get it, is why are you going to get it? Why are you doing this? Doesn't anybody want to stand up and say, we gave them 250 million? You know, you look at what the convention center subcommittee did, the first thing they did was got their priority moved up. Now, that's proven to be a mistake, given what's happened. That's proven to be a big mistake. They changed the location from what was originally proposed. They, now they're adding a hotel, and they picked a site that is off the page in terms of what it would cost. It seems to me that maybe it's time for this council to take back that and say, let's just figure out what to do and do it, rather than letting people that have, that committee, not only does that committee run that, it runs the whole agenda for the whole MAPS advisory committee. Everything, everything is centered on, how do we take enough money or allocate enough money to that project to make that project work? Nobody cared about sidewalks. No, we just decided we'd take that out of our back pocket, not out of the bond, not out of the sales tax for MAPS. We took it out of our back pocket. And it's still not finished.
We didn't. We took it out of MAPS III.
Transfer additional 9 million?
We did it out, I thought, at the time, we did it out of our own funds.
We did both.
What?
We did 9 million dollars out of MAPS III monies, and we took 4 million dollars out of fund balance, those are two separate events. But we did take 9 million dollars out of MAPS money.
Okay, and we took 4 million dollars out of.
Fund balance.
But that wasn't to complete the MAPS III fund promises?
The 9 million.
Have they been completed? No, they haven't.
All right.
They haven't, have they?
Well, we're in the process.
But we're not finished.
We're in the process.
And 4 million of it came out of our money. I think it's splitting a hair to say it didn't come to do the MAPS III thing, it went to those very projects.
No, you're wrong. You're forgetting the process that we went through at the time.
We took 9 million dollars out of additional.
I understand, but we took 4 million out of fund balance.
But we didn't take it, the council elected to supplement the MAPS III funding to do even more than the MAPS III promise originally was intended. Because the MAPS III plan for sidewalks was well over 100 miles of sidewalks, and we took, no, they did a plan that far exceeded the MAPS III plans in 2009. And so we took 4 million dollars out of excess dollars that we had.
Are we forgetting that part of that was because they were bid at four-foot sidewalks, and they ended up being six, and that jack to cost?
No.
Did I just live, do I just live in a parallel world, everybody here? I must, because I know exactly what I thought happened. I thought that we didn't allocate enough money, because the sidewalks were designed at four feet rather than six feet, and the project, the list that I saw and that I voted for is not built yet, and it will not be built with MAPS money unless we do something, take it out of contingency.
You're wrong.
That 4 million dollars was for projects that were never included in MAPS.
That's right.
I guess I'm confused also, because I thought we promised 75 miles of sidewalks, and we're not going to get that, no matter what we do.
No, I think we're.
We're getting close.
We haven't bid the projects, we don't know yet. The intention was that the 9 million would get us there.
Okay. What I would ask the council to consider, I think Pete alluded to it earlier in his comments, is at what point does the public have a say? What is the threshold at which you return the issue back to the taxpayers? The Oklahoma Constitution envisions that if you have a tax for a specific purpose, that that's voted on by the people. And at what point does this get so large that the answer is to return it to the people for a vote of the people? If it's 100 million dollars or 200 million dollars of public subsidy, can five votes on the council commit the taxpayers to that? Sorry.
Or, or at some point, whatever that number is, do you, do you descend to a vote of the people, let the people decide if they will spend 100 million on a hotel? I guess I'm asking the council to think about that as a policy decision.
Ed, I would say, if we needed, or if we said, for example, that whatever the number is that we believe is needed for public assistance with respect to a hotel, and we wanted to obtain that money through a sales tax, well, then yes, we would go out to vote. This does not pull money out of the MAPS III funds in any way. If, for example, the public assistance is in the form of a hotel exemption, you know, like a sales tax exemption, to where that money stays within the project, that's not creating a new tax on the public. You know, it's just putting the money back into the project. So, you know, I understand what you're saying, but I think the way you're saying it is a little bit misleading to say that we're pulling funds, or alluding to the idea of pulling funds out of the MAPS III, or that we're going to assess additional taxes on the public. I don't think either one of those ideas has.
Yeah, David, I'm not saying that either, but if, you might just be diverting existing taxing, taxes away from taxing jurisdictions, like with a TIF. With a TIF, you wouldn't raise taxes, you just divert it away from schools, city counting, health, libraries, metro tech, to the hotel. That, creation of that TIF could be presented to the public for a vote. Should we or should we not create a TIF within a TIF? The public could vote, we, as a council, could submit that to the public.
We have statutory authority to create a TIF already.
But if we decided to. If we decided to, we could, could we not, Kenny?
You actually can't have an advisory election. It could be done through an initiative petition, or you might be able to refer it to the voters with a referendum petition, but there's not any real mechanism for the city council to submit the creation of a TIF to the voters, because it's, it would be an advisory election, we already have the authority to do that under the statute.
So the council would, so the only way is the council would approve the TIF, and then you could have a referendum petition in response to that council action?
Could, potentially.
And then that would take it to a vote of the people?
Right.
Okay.
Quick question on this TIF approval thing. Kenny, if we wanted to establish a new TIF, do we not have to have the approval of the other taxing bodies that are involved to do a new TIF?
They have to be members of the committee, the other taxing jurisdictions, and they get to make a recommendation, and depending on what the recommendation is, you might need a higher vote to actually approve it. I'm not sure specifically what the vote is, but they don't have to directly vote for it.
But they have to, they do get to look at the TIF and say, we think it's a good idea, or we think it's a bad idea.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. James?
Kenny, just, could I ask a quick question? What does it cost the taxpayers to run an election?
Now, Francis probably knows that better than I do, a special election.
A citywide election would be about 150,000.
The question about whether the other taxing entities, they don't have a say in it. They, I mean, because it doesn't matter what they say, we can do it anyway. Up until this time, most of them didn't even know that they did or didn't. In fact, the school board hired a specialist to come in and tell them about TIFs, and the guy said, oh yeah, you have to approve it. A week later, he finds out, oh no, they don't have to approve it. They don't have, that's not so, that they have, they may have the bully pulpit, but they don't have a vote. The state law says, we have the vote.
But we have worked with them to negotiate through the other TIFs, an allocation of the TIF dollars for their benefit.
Well, that's, I'm not so sure I would agree with that, that we've really negotiated with them, but I will leave it, I'll leave it.
James has been patiently waiting for items.
I guess I'll add to this debate. We've talked about public input a lot in this, and I think that the best way of public input is for everybody out there to contact us. I mean, you guys, the citizens elected us to make decisions, and so, but we all want to hear what every single one of our constituents thinks about these issues. And I think that anybody who's reading Steve Lackmire, Bill Crum, and Ben Felder's articles about these issues should be somewhat informed about what TIFs are, what is coming our way about the convention center hotel. So I think that public input is really put on the public. How much input do you want to do is really how involved you are, it's not, so I think that, I think that's what I would encourage every citizen to do, is to email or call us and tell us what you think. Something that hasn't been touched on, which I think I read a couple days ago, was the convention center subcommittee rejecting the Cox Center site for a possible, is that true?
No, that's one of the sites that's being evaluated.
I thought that I read that the Cox.
There was negative comments in regard to it.
Okay, so it has not been taken out of possibilities?
I don't believe so.
So populace is still going, whenever they're going through the.
Yeah, it's not without challenges, but it's still being evaluated.
Yeah, right, I mean, it has negatives, but it also has positives, so I was just making sure that that was still a possible site, and it is.
Yes.
Okay, good. That's all I got.
All right. City manager reports?
Nothing this morning.
All right, citizens to be heard, Joe Sarge Nelson.
Good morning, council, mayor, everybody. I'm here today to tell you a true story. And it happened to me, and the strangest part of all, I'm here today to tell you this story, and it's true. And it could happen to any one of you. In 2009, for the reasons at that time I was unaware of, at about 5:30 or 6:00 PM on March 31st, my arms became to ache in such a way that the pain became unbearable. I went to my wife, who was lying down, and told her I needed to go to the hospital. She became frantic and asked why, and I told her that we both were unsure what was happening to me, as I was not having chest pains or anything, it's just my arms ached like you could not imagine. I didn't make it to my living room, or even to my chair, but between my mother and my wife, who is living with us at the same time, I woke up in the chair, and the room was filled with ambulance and fire and the police. I asked the $64,000 question, what's going on? And the man replied, Mr. Nelson, you just had a massive heart attack, and stupid me. My remark was, how can I help you? And everyone in the room thought it was funny. The fire person turned me over to the ambulance man, and all he could say was, are you always this upbeat? I said, yes. And we continued to work on me, and they told me they were taking me for a ride. I didn't mind sirens, and I said, no, so they placed me on a gurney, rolled me out to outside, and it just slightly had begun to rain. And they got me inside, and away we went. I found out later that I had died three times in that ambulance, and twice in the emergency room in room 15, and the last time was when they cut me over and placed the stent in my heart. When I came to in room 315 at Baptist Hospital, and I saw my wife, I asked her how I looked, and she told me, she said, when she saw me for the first time, I reminded her of that movie, Koma, and she said, with all those wires and stuff, but other than that, I looked just fine. Now to the real story and the reason I'm here to tell you about. I was awakened from a sound sleep, for whatever reason, and was unable to go back to sleep. I went up to my living room chair and flipped on the television, and usually at 3:00 PM and AM in the morning, there's nothing much going on. I managed to get some coffee, and the movie was coming to an end, was premiering the next one called Backdraft. I got comfortable, and it had a few stars in it I enjoy, like Kurt Russell, which most of you probably already know, and it was showing these guys were finishing up at a firefighting scene in a small warehouse fire. And while cleaning up at the scene, there were a few harsh words being spoke by Kurt Russell to one of the firefighters, and it appeared to be showdown time. The commercial broke in, and the scene returned, and the guys were at the fire station. The polite rumble still was going on, and just the rest was just talk, not being where you are supposed to be during a real fire. But the scene died down a bit, and the cruts of all that verbal blasting, lives were at stake, not just the building, lies, that's right, firefighters' lies. Then the mood swing went silent for someone and everyone else that was at that scene. It began to show the. It began to show the crews at work cleaning and checking their equipment right then and there at the station. That's what every firefighter does, for real, before he sits down, eats, or does anything else. And that's what's done every call. And after being ready for that next call, not knowing when it'll come, but knowing that in fact it will come. And being ready is one of the major vital elements of saving lives, property, and equipment, no matter of what kind, and in that precise order. Regardless of who it is, I, as a movie, as the movie moved along, the scene picked up the pace. I do assure you, it was a hard and tear-jerking lesson that that fire, or police, or ambulance do not wish to repeat at that time, but it does sometimes. The boys were on the second and third floor of the warehouse fire building, just like many we have right down here in downtown area and other areas of Oklahoma City, and especially in the brick town and downtown area. But the action in the scene now picked up, showing that two or three firefighters on the second floor fighting and looking for the hidden pockets of compressed flames, ready to explode upon finding the slightest crack or opening. But when it did come, the firefighters were blown all over the place. I jumped clean out of my chair. It's strange on how you get all caught up in a movie, and I saw the flaws as they came. I was supposed to react the way I did. I gripped and griped and cursed the scene, and those I thought was acting stupid in it, well, it's just the way it was, just a movie. I became involved while trying to help those who were fighting for their lives and others as well, and watching the flames as they soar and roll across the ceilings of the floor, which were the fact the floors the firefighters above were standing on. And the room became engulfed in flames and the floors gave way, then hearing the screams and watching those men and women go crashing through the floor, to the floor next to them, and the debris falling with them. I became a little sick at my stomach at that time, watching the firefighters scrambling to save theirself and their other brothers and sisters in peril. I got up and went to get a drink of water, and the truth is, I really got nauseated. Just sitting in the chair, getting emotionally involved with the movie, the lives lost in that scene was the real-life brother of a co-fire, a co-firefighter and the battalion chief, Kurt Russell, who had just the day before verbally fought with his brother and the others who had just perished, who he felt who had a real mistake at the previous fire. Only these were minor mistakes. But to him, mistakes at any fire can prove fatal and lethal, and this time it was. There were no mistakes at this one. Everyone was doing exactly what each are trained to do. But training, even as good and as hard as it is, still does not stop a disaster, even when the choice of what you do has been made. I seemed to suffer right along with the, with Kurt. Soon, he laid down, his helmet, unbuttoned his fire coat, simply went out and got into his car, drove straight home. It showed his car pulling into his drive, cheeks, tears streaked, suddenly opened the door and fell to the running board, and just sat there staring. Then a woman's voice rang up from behind him. It showed his face of a woman, and slowly, her face gave to the impression that she somehow already knew. I quickly placed her hand over her face to hide the tears in her eyes. Kurt rose up slowly and began walking toward her, placed his hand on her shoulder, still crying and saying that he had tried to save him, but it happened so fast, he was there, and then suddenly he wasn't. And while still crying and talking at the same time, my only brother, I couldn't even save him. Kurt showed up at the station the following day in full dress uniform, and the rest of you folks already know that, that the movie does show very clearly firefighters, the police, ambulance, and others who are at the funeral, and the movie came to an end. I got up then and went to my typewriter and wrote what is called the Oklahoma City Fire Station, located at Northwest Fifth Street here in Oklahoma City and its museum. Two large plaques, given to the fire department chief at the time, Alan Benson, former county commissioner, was presented by Jim Broth and myself, simply named the Badge of Courage. Given gratefully and honorably to those men and women who do in fact fight these battles in multiple daily ways. The bottom line is fact, inside that uniform are people. They risk it all for us every day. Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Joe. End word adjourned.